Name and address for the record. There's also a sign-in sheet that we ask you to also complete. And then explain to the board what you're asking for and why. Then the city will read a findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those facts or add any other facts at that time. Then the city will give a staff recommendation. You will have another opportunity to speak at that point. Then we will open public comment on that case. So if you're here to speak on a case, that would be your opportunity to step forward. Again, state your name and address for the record, sign in at the sign-in sheet, and then make your comments to the board. Then we will close public comment and turn it over to the board to discuss and make a decision, and then we'll move on to the next case. So will the city call the first case, please?
Yes, ma'am. The appellant William Somerville owner is requesting the following waiver from the board to legalize a non-conforming existing fence beyond the front of the house, zero permitted approximately 20 feet proposed. The property is located on the south side of Philip Drive at 23989 Philip Drive, Sidwell Parcel, 762426302018, Zoned R4, single-family residential. This appeals to Section 5.37-1, Article 4, Paragraph C, Subsections A, B, and C, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Is the appellant here?
Yes.
Okay, please step to the podium. And if you could state your name and address for the record, please?
His name is William Somerville at 23989 Philip Drive, Southfield, Michigan. I've been there since January of 1998.
Okay, thank you. And can you explain to the board what you're asking for and why, please?
Yes. After I moved in, I started getting theft of my property in the back of the house. At that time, the fence wasn't there. You have a picture of the main fence, but there's a section fence on the other side. But anyway, it was there to keep thieves from stealing. You know, I lost three lawnmowers and two snowblowers, you know, and that was a lot of money. But the main reason was my wife went out to take the trash out once, and as the garage door was coming up, there were a pair of legs there, and that just shook her up. She had, that was the second time. The first time was in Oak Park where somebody ransacked the house, and I think it's all in my letter to you. So the police came and recommended security lights, and I told them I got them, and I showed it to them, and they said, "Well, maybe just need a fence in the area." But they didn't know, I don't think they knew, the regulation at that time. And I didn't know either, okay? Because I've traveled the world, and you know, when I moved into a military place, they gave you the regulation right off the bat, you know? They didn't, you know, ring around. So anyway, I took their suggestion and had that fence installed in 2010. And since then, there's been no theft on either side of the house. My wife feels more secure, and if you notice, I also put a remote electronic gate where she can jump in her car and hit the button, and the gate opens, and she can go on out, same way coming in. And I felt, you know, with my military career and her staying here waiting for me, she was, at least do a gate, you know? So that's my reasoning. I would like to keep that security there. Also, later on in my letter, you can see where the crime is really starting to increase in the area. We're getting notifications on our phone of theft, of assaults, of all kind of mischief and criminal activity, you know, going on. And I think it's, you know, we might need to be, as a city and as a people, proactive in dealing with that.
Okay, thank you very much. Just stay right there for us. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, ma'am. Findings of fact, Case 24-15. Appellant William Somerville owner is requesting the following waiver from the board to legalize a non-conforming existing fence beyond the front of the house, zero permitted approximately 20 feet proposed. The property is located on the south side of Philip Drive at 23989 Philip Drive, Sidwell Parcel, 2426302018, Zoned R4, single-family residential. This appeals to Section 5.37-1, Article 4, Paragraph C, Subsections A, B, and C, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The properties to the north, southeast, and west are Zoned R4, single-family residences, and are developed with the single-family home in the Washington Village subdivision number three. Field inspection of the surrounding area reveals the properties to the north, southeast, and west are mostly one-story, single-family dwellings and a few two-story dwellings mixed in. The exteriors are made mostly of brick and siding. Most of the homes in the area have attached garages, except for a few homes that have a detached garage or do not have a garage at all. The construction of surrounding properties ranges approximately from 1,000 square feet to 2,000 square feet. For the surrounding properties, there are mostly legal conforming and setback and lot coverage requirements. The subject property was built in 1948 and is a 1,049-square-foot, one-story, single-family residence on a full basement with a 420-square-foot attached garage and 132-square-foot connecting breezeway. The appellant proposes to legalize a non-conforming illegal existing fence that is more than 30 feet, or 30 inches high and more than 16 feet in length in the front yard. Constructed a vinyl fence with metal gates, approximately 20 feet proposed, zero permitted. The variance request is for a fence approximately 48 inches high and more than 16 feet in length, including wrought iron gates across the driveway and extending approximately 20 feet into the front yard. Approximately 20 feet proposed, zero permitted.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
As far as the violation is concerned, I have to agree with that. But like, again, you know, I was ignorant of all of this, you know? The fence was up for years, and then all of a sudden, I get a notice. And so it was a shock to me of the situation. So I'm asking for a, I guess, I don't know exact words you guys use, but I call it exception to policy to, in reference of this, because I'm just trying to protect my property and my family. That's all it boils down to.
Understood, okay. Are there any other facts you want to add at this time?
Well, you know, it might be a question from a board member in reference of the space in front of, you know, on the side of the garage. There are pictures in the letter that shows that the actual house itself is not fenced in. It's wide open. But that area was fenced in for maneuverability of the vehicles. I have four vehicles. I was considered essential personnel, and so was my wife. She worked with the VA. And we always had a spare car for each one of us in case the car didn't work. There's no need to fumble around with it. I would instruct her to just get in the next car and drive on off, you know? My job was working with Selfridge at that time and also working with Ford Motor Company.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for denial of the waiver for the non-conforming illegal existing fence beyond the front of the house. The recommendation for denial is based upon the following. The appellant did not apply for the required fence permit, and this condition would have been denied at the time of application. And any undue hardship was caused by the person who installed the illegal fence or by the owner allowing the installation of the illegal fence, and approval could substantially impair the intent and purpose of the chapter. The requested waiver for setback could have substantial adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. Based on available satellite images, the non-conforming illegal fence appears to have been installed between 2010 and 2014. The non-conforming illegal fence does not meet the definition of decorative fence, living fence, or landscape fence.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to share with the board before we turn it over to public comment?
Just that, you know, I'm trying to, like I said, protect my family. If the fence is taken down, which I don't have the funds for, because it was a lot of funds to put it up, I'm right back where I started, you know? And a decorative fence doesn't do the security. And I think that needs to be considered, that the person is trying to secure their family health and welfare and their property.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you want to have a seat in the front row, we might have additional questions for you.
Thank you.
Sure thing. So now we will open public comment. If you are here to speak on this case, this would be your opportunity to step forward to the microphone and address the board. Again, we just ask that you state your name and address and sign in on the sign-in sheet.
Good evening. My name is Linda Enyadi. I live at 23766 Maple Ridge, Southfield, Michigan. I'm here representing our neighborhood association regarding the request to legalize this non-conforming fence. I also am personally against it, as it does not conform to the other homes in the neighborhood, most of which would have no fencing at all, much less a security fence that is in front of the house.
Through the chair, can you ever speak up a little bit?
Yeah, speak right into the microphone.
Oh, okay. Do you need me to repeat anything?
Sure.
Where do you want me to start?
If you could just start over for us, please.
Sorry. My name is Linda Enyadi. I live at 23766 Maple Ridge. I'm here representing our neighborhood association regarding this request. I personally am against it, because it does not conform to the other homes in the neighborhood. None of the other homes have security fences that are completely surrounding the home and even in front of it. Some of us have fences, you know, in the back to help with the deer and all that. Our neighborhood is very countrified. We don't have sidewalks. We have lots of old trees, and everybody has a big, open property. And this is completely out of the character of the neighborhood. That home has probably a quarter of an acre in back of the house, which could be parking all his cars. There's two cars parked in front of his house on a gravel thing that he put down, which is also against code, in front of his house. And there's always two cars there. So in the backyard, he could put all his machinery and all his cars and everything. He's also done other things on his property that are against code, but I know that we're here only about the fence. And as president of the neighborhood association, I have fielded many complaints and inquiries from our neighborhood as to what he's doing and why he's doing all these things to his property. We are asking that you deny his request to keep this illegal fencing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, please.
Name and address?
Yes, name and address, please. And if there's anyone else who wishes to speak on this case, yep, please step forward.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Allen. I live at 23231 Maple Ridge Drive in Southfield. I am also too a board member for the Washington Village Association. I hold a role as the treasurer of our association, which has been established for, I would say, over maybe 18 years. With this being said, in regards to the issues that we're facing in regards to the resident that wants the fencing and extension of the fencing, I would just like to say that we are a community. And I can say honestly, I've never met Mr. Somerville before. He's never came to any of our association meetings. He's never voiced anything in regards to his desires or if it's even been any theft or anything that's been happening to them as a resident within the community. So I just want to say that I think if he would, you know, if it would be a connection or something that would offer him some solace, so he would know that he's not on an island by himself, him and his wife. He's a part of the community. And we're here as an organization, as an association, to be there for one another. So in the event, if it was some type of thefts and something that he's been concerned about, you know, bring it to our attention. But as I said, I've never seen him come to anything. As our former mayor of Southfield had said a long time ago, curb appeal is what makes a difference. And I know it's been a transition in our city. I can agree to that. But curb appeal makes a difference. And I like the city that we live in, and I think the people that live here come here for a reason. And as the president of our association mentioned, it's, most of our homes are on large lot sizes, very large. So this fencing is very unsightly. It doesn't, like she said, it doesn't conform to the couture of the neighborhood. You know, I am empathetic to a degree of being secure and safety, but as you said in the beginning of everything, it's a violation. So with that being said in itself, we need to adhere to the violation or conform to something, you know, to modify it. So all I would like to say is I would like to welcome Mr. Somerville and his wife to come out to meet his residents and his neighbors, get to know us better. Maybe we can find a simple solution from there. But just, I think he needs to know that he's a part of a community. He is not on an island by himself, and this does not just affect him, but affects the community as a whole. And I think that's all I really want to say. I'm going to write my name and address on here as well.
Great, thank you.
So through the chair?
Yes.
So what is her recommendation?
I mean, she said she doesn't agree.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this case for public comment? This will be your last opportunity. Okay, we're going to close public comment and turn it over to the board. Any thoughts? Go ahead.
I have a couple.
Yep, well, we will be asking you questions, so you can come back up to the microphone.
Okay. When I became a member of the board, it was, there were references to the fence ordinance being relatively recent. I was just curious if the city could tell me when the fence ordinance, current fence ordinance was put in place? And was there a different fence ordinance before that?
I don't have that information in front of me. I can get it to you, but I don't have it here with me now.
I might, through the chair. Let me take a look really quick.
She's looking.
I'm looking for the ordinance date.
I believe it's after 2010. I believe it was 20, I agree. It was like recently when we came onto the floor, so. But the question would be...
Was there a different fence ordinance?
Yes, I think there...
So there was...
If I might, there was never a fence ordinance prior to this. This was the first ordinance, but I'm trying to find the date here.
If that is the case, why is this not a, it was in the findings of facts, it was called an illegal, non-conforming. Usually they, you say it...
It's legal, not conforming.
Legal, non-conforming.
Right.
It was not called that in this findings of fact. If there was no fence ordinance when he put up the fence, it would be a legal, non-conforming.
We don't know when the fence was...
We don't know. He has stated that it was 2010. City stated it could have been anywhere. It has no evidence to rebut his claim, because they said 2000. So I mean, this being, it's been 14 years. I'm also curious as what the delay might have been since, you know, the beginning of the fence ordinance to, was it resident complaints? Was it just a city inspector driving by? What was the...
My understanding that the code enforcement department went out to this location. I don't know if it was on a complaint, but it was an enforcement. And because it's a zoning issue, they turned it over to the building department.
But my feeling is he's had the fence for 14 years, and while I probably, because of the, you know, objections stated by the city and by his neighbors, I wouldn't approve it today. He's had the fence for 14 years. I would grant the waiver.
You would not grant the waiver?
I would.
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is actually for the two people that spoke. And you said you had many, the two ladies that spoke from the association. The two ladies that spoke from the association? You said that you had many complaints? Do you have any signatures or anything like that of the complaints?
It's been reported to the code department, several things, their projects, we have.
Anything about the fence, though?
Yes, I mean, people are asking me. I don't know, so I refer to the code department.
Okay.
And then the code department will then send them on to whatever department, like its own engineer and labor.
My other question is, there is no one else who has had any problems with break-ins and so forth?
I mean, I had a break-in many, many years ago, but I didn't build a barricade around my house. Police came out and, you know, that was it. I mean, I stole my jewelry, but they didn't do anything else.
Okay. Sarah, do you have the fence date?
Yes, 2012.
2012, okay. Mr. Rogers?
This is a weird fence case. I think the primary thing for me is security and safety in the city of Southfield. No one wants to live in their house thinking that somebody's outside in the backyard when they're watching TV at nine o'clock at night, and they think everything's okay. I understand also the code of the fence as well. When I drove by Mr. Somerville's house, I did not see anything less than a really nice presentation of the front yard. I liked what I saw. Now, that doesn't really have anything to do with code, but the optics do say a lot. We bring up curb appeal before. I thought he has nice curb appeal. Doesn't have, everything doesn't have to be the same on the street. And I understand not everybody wants to have fences, and you have larger homes with bigger lots. That's nice. But his circumstances are different in a lot of ways. Number one, if he's overseas and his wife is at home and he's 5,000 miles, I don't know how you would feel, but I wouldn't, my wife wouldn't feel too good either if the house was being broken into while she's home and I'm away. So you have a couple ways to handle it. You can, you can offer a little olive branch and say, "Well, what can you do with that fence that you have there now? Can you adorn it with landscape? Can you do stuff like that?" In light of the fact that you said financially you're strapped to even take it down, I mean, is there a way to possibly give time, you know, a couple years? We give times for people, extensions for MRI things that are useless. You know, there's got to be a better way. And then, really getting back to the code, the tree fence code was made in 2012. So what are we, 12 years from there? It's in its infancy right now, and it has to be developed more. And there are things that have come up in it that are redundant, like the corner house, that we don't really need to hear that case anymore. We already know what it's about, and we all say the same thing every time. But this is a security issue. And if you were broken into several times, that's alarming. You know, I'm calling the chief of police in the city of Southfield if that happens. And if there's not any cars coming out to check out the neighborhood on a regular basis, then I don't care who, what committees you have in your subdivision. You don't have any protection from the city, so you're all on an island together. So I don't even, in my opinion, security supersedes the codes, you know, for now. So if you told me that, "Oh, no, Mr. Rogers, the subdivision's gotten a lot safer. We haven't had a break-in in here in seven years." And, okay, well, statistics say that, then fine. Then I'll say, maybe the fence is not necessary. But, you know, and then take this a step further, and I'll be done. You know, let's say he wants to move out of Southfield because of this. Now we have a vacant house. And now we lose a genuine, good resident. I don't know how, I don't know how this ends. It doesn't, it doesn't end great, but I think there's other ways to handle it. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I feel like the facts have changed at this point. If we know the fence was built in 2010 and the fence ordinance went into effect in 2012, he doesn't have to apply for a variance. It's a legal, non-conforming fence.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
For clarification, the fence ordinance was established in 2012, but the building code requires a permit to install a fence prior to that. So we would have had to have a permit to install the fence even in 2010, which we don't have.
But it would not be, it would still be illegal, not before he would have violated, he would have built something without a permit.
Agreed.
But it would still be, it would be legal, non-conforming, and he wouldn't need a waiver.
Agreed.
He would get some sort of civil penalty or whatever the penalty for that is. He would not, again, need a waiver, as the chair pointed out.
Mr. Jenkins?
Well, my whole thing is, there should be a compromise somewhere in between, because you can't have...
Can you pull the microphone closer to you as well, please?
There's concerns on both sides, and reasonable people work out reasonable things. Now, if you're not reasonable, then I understand that as well, okay? But you've got to consider your neighborhood as well. And if there's some curb appeal that you could address with the existing fence, that may be a compliment to the neighborhood, which I think would go a long ways. We can't isolate ourselves and say we're going to just do something because we want to, because that's not fair to the community. I go out of my way, whatever I do, I even do things that I shouldn't be doing and make sure my neighborhood is acceptable and correct, okay? Because this is Southfield, and I want Southfield to be the best. As you move to Southfield, I want you to make sure that you do the right thing. And I'm saying this, sir, is if you can do something or you suggest something I can do right now, that would, I think that would go along with me, how I feel anyway, okay? Or how the neighborhood feels as well. I'd like to have a comment if I could from him as well.
Oh, you want to comment from me, sir?
Yes, in regard to, yes.
Okay, so I understand your concerns in that area. A lot of this is in imagines of my ignorance of the policies and procedures of Southfield, moving from overseas, from several places, and being taught or shown one thing and coming here, and it was totally different. You know, I felt, you know, when I got all this, I felt, you know, if the city had sent a pamphlet or made it part of signing over the house, whatever, these are some of the regulations, the top 10 violations or whatever, then that might have made things different and brought my attention to it. But I didn't see any of that, nor did any of that occur to me. But, you know, I will take, you know, some responsibility of my ignorance to it. However, like I said, that fence was established for security reasons. The lady mentioned about me parking my cars in the back. Well, I don't know if you guys know about it, but, you know, when it rains, it floods back there. It floods a lot back there. You can't leave any vehicles back there without it sinking. So that's one thing. As far as the drive I put in front, I've talked to the inspectors about it. They're going to come out there and measure, because it should be 60% of green in reference of the drive. I've asked them to come out and measure, and I would make the adjustments after they measure. So it's not that I'm just, you know, putting up a wall and saying, "No, I'm not going to do anything." I'm trying to work with, you know, anyone as much as possible. And as the gentleman said, he came by and... as much as possible. And as the gentleman said, he came by and saw my, my home and everything and they had pretty good curb appeal. Now, it's, it's, but the main reason of that fence was security, for my wife, for my family, for my property. And others may not have been vandalized, whatever, but as you can see in my letter, I'm getting those kind of crime things over my phone all the time in the Southfield area. It's, it's coming, coming to that point, you know, and, you know, if, if the city needs my help into establishing some type of policies, procedures and protecting the citizens of Southfield better, I will do all I can to support in that area.
I would like to just kind of pull my board members and see, I'm, I'm thinking a motion to dismiss since it's legal, non-conforming, either with or without prejudice. Because I don't think we need to, I don't, I don't think we're, we don't need to rule on a legal, non-conforming fence.
I would, I would be, I would support that or I would grant the waiver if, if that's what Mr. Somerville continues to ask for.
So I would grant a waiver as well.
Okay.
And I understand associations, but associations go both ways. You can receive complaints and you can choose to complain to the city, or you can choose to complain to the individual, or you can have your own laws and rules, but as, unless you are a formal HOA and I may be overstepping, then an individual does have the right to enjoyment of their property with the security that's necessary. And so I would, I would grant a waiver.
Okay. Mr. Rogers?
I agree.
Okay.
I would too.
So I guess we're ready. Do you have anything further to say, Mr. Jenkins?
I just, I just want to make sure I'm clear about, my question was, can you go to the association and say to yourself and to them that you, your intent is to make sure the curb appeal?
Well, you know, yeah, so, you know, in reference to that, I have been to the association meetings at the church. When the city decided to do a $5 million improvement of the area, of the area where they laid new water piping and roads and smoothed all that, I was there to hear what they were going to do. That was, that probably was my first time, but Mr. Roosevelt Lyons, who lives down the street, him and I are fairly close, talked me into going there and I went there and learned a lot. And I agree with the council's, I, I was totally unaware of any other complaints other than what I've just heard today. And if there was more direct communication, one-on-one communication, I believe a lot, all of this, we would not be wasting you guys' time today.
This is our duty.
So, so again, through the chair, so your answer is yes? I just asked you?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'll, I'll talk to them. I will indicate. But, you know, I have to agree with the other council members' statement about, you know, you know, this was all born out of security, okay?
No, I understand that part, but the site, site appeal is also part of, part of the process when you have a neighborhood, okay?
Well, you know, in my opinion, security overrules.
I didn't say that. I said both.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Libbet, will you make a motion for us?
Yes. The appellant, William Somerville, owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board. To legalize a non-conforming existing fence beyond the front of the house, zero permitted, approximately 20 proposed. The property is located on the south side of Philip Drive at 23989 Philip Drive, Sidwell Parcel number 76-24-26-302-018, Zoned R4, Single Family Resident. And I move that the, there be a waiver granting what Mr. Somerville is requesting.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Your waiver has been granted.
Thank you, Board. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Will the city call the next case, please?
Case number 24-12. The appellant, Najagasso of Grand Eight LLC, owner, is requesting the following variance from the board. A building setback variance of 37 feet from the Seminole Street Road right-of-way line, 60 feet required, 23 feet existing, for a proposed restaurant with a drive-through. Ingress egress points setback, variance of 44 feet from the intersection of two streets, 60 feet required, 16 feet existing, for a proposed restaurant with a drive-through. To permit ingress and egress points from the thoroughfare that is not a major thoroughfare for a proposed restaurant with a drive-through. Landscape width variance of 2.25 feet along Seminole Street, 15 feet required, 12.75 feet proposed. The property is located at the northeast corner of Eight Mile Road and Seminole Street, Sidwell Parcel 2431356025, located at 27200-27201, I'm sorry, 27210, West Eight Mile Road, Zoned B3 General Business. This appeal is to sections 5.169, Article 18, and section 5.194 and 5.195, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Is the appellant here? Hi, if you could step to the podium, please. More than one person can step up as well. We just ask you both to introduce yourself and state your name and address for the record so that the recording, okay, just you, go ahead.
Okay. I'm Tim Foad, 24045 Woodland Drive. I'm the architect on the job with the Gasso Group.
Okay, hold on one second. Are you authorized by Mr. Gasso?
Yes.
Are you?
Yes.
Oh, are you Mr. Gasso? Okay, I need you to introduce yourself then, please, as well.
Najagasso from Grand Eight LLC.
Okay. And your address, please, for the record?
20320 West Eight Mile.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right, now you may speak.
Basically, we've gone through planning and site plan approval. We also have gone through the city council approval. So our next step is to ask for the variance on the zoning end of it to allow the drive-through to encroach upon the right-of-way that's been established. That's pretty much what we're looking for.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
For ZDA case 24-12, the appellant, Najagasso of Grand Eight LLC, owner, is requesting the following variances from the board. Building setback variance of 37 feet from the Seminole Street Road right-of-way line, 60 feet required, 23 feet existing, for use as a proposed restaurant with drive-through. Ingress egress point setback variance of 44 feet from the intersection of two streets, 60 feet required, 16 feet existing, for a proposed restaurant with drive-through. To permit ingress and egress points from a thoroughfare that is not a major thoroughfare for a proposed restaurant with drive-through and landscape width variance of 2.25 feet along Seminole Street, 15 feet required, 12.75 feet proposed. The property is located at the northeast corner of Eight Mile Road and Seminole Street, Sidwell Parcel 2431356025, located at 27200 through 27210, West Eight Mile Road, Zoned B3 General Business. The subject property is developed with a multi-tenant commercial shopping center, Grand Eight Plaza. Properties to the north are Zoned R1 Single Family Residential and are developed with single-family homes fronting Seminole Street and Point Sienna Street, respectively. The property to the south, within Redford Township, is Zoned C2 General Commercial and is developed with Pinter's Flowerland. The property to the east is Zoned B3 General Business and is developed with the Great Lakes Dialysis. Properties to the west are Zoned B3 General Business and are developed with two single-family homes fronting Seminole Street and an undeveloped lot. Site contains 1.51 acres of land with 306 feet of frontage on Eight Mile Road and a depth of 261 feet along Seminole Street. The recently approved site plan and special land use request was to allow a restaurant with drive-through within the B3 General Business zoning district and for various site improvements. Article 18, General Bus, B3 General Business, Section 5.169 of the zoning ordinance was amended on October 21, 2021 to require that drive-in and fast-food restaurants, any restaurant with a drive-through or bar lounge, and any restaurant open 24 hours must obtain special land use approval and have a building setback of at least 60 feet from any street right-of-way line. Further, the amendment required that ingress and egress points for these uses be directly from a major thoroughfare. Per Article 2, Section 5.7 of the zoning ordinance, a major thoroughfare is defined as any street with an existing or proposed right-of-way of 120 feet or more. Although the main ingress egress point via shared access agreement with the property to the east is off Eight Mile Road, which is a major thoroughfare, there is an existing ingress egress drive and egress-only drive along Seminole Street. Drive-through traffic will most likely enter the site through the main center entrance on Eight Mile, and if entering through the southerly drive on Seminole, vehicles must traverse around the building to enter the drive-through lane along the north side of the building. The existing building was constructed in 1973, prior to the adoption of the city's current zoning ordinance, however, complies with current zoning ordinance requirements for building setbacks. The only modification being made to the site to accommodate the restaurant with drive-through is elimination of a portion of the existing, currently compliant sideyard landscaping for the addition of the drive-through lane. Placement of stacking spaces for the drive-through was thoroughly reviewed by the city traffic engineer and deemed optimal in terms of traffic flow throughout the site and in relationship to existing ingress and egress points. No right turn signage was required at the northerly drive to prohibit traffic traveling into the adjacent Oakland Meadows subdivision to the north. Several landscape upgrades are being proposed on the site in conjunction with the special land use and site plan approvals. The approved landscape plan reflects the addition of four new deciduous trees, 16 evergreen shrubs, and 19 deciduous shrubs. The bulk of the landscaping will be added at the corner of Eight Mile and Seminole and along the Seminole Street frontage. Additionally, the existing ornamental fencing with brick piers along Eight Mile Road will be continued adjacent to the drive-through lane along Seminole Street to provide added buffer and separation from the drive-through lane traffic from Seminole Street itself, as well as the adjacent properties to the west.
Okay, thank you. Does the appellant agree with these facts? I need you to come back up to the microphone, please.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Are there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
No, that was very well done.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to approve the variances requested based upon the following. The variances requested will have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties, especially since the building and drives have existed in the same location since 1973. There may be additional traffic generated by the proposed restaurant with drive-through. However, the location of the drive-through lane in relationship to the site and existing ingress egress points was thoroughly vetted by the city traffic engineer as well as other relevant city staff during the site plan review process. Proposed plant materials and continuation of the ornamental fence with brick piers on the west side of the building will enhance the aesthetics of the site while providing adequate separation from the building and drive-through lane from pedestrians, traffic on Seminole Street, and adjacent properties to the west. And the proposed variances requested are still in keeping with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else the appellant would like to add before we open public comment? Okay, we will now open public comment on this case. If there's anybody from the public wishing to speak on this case, this would be your opportunity to step forward. And please state your name and address for the record and also sign in on the sign-in sheet and make your comments.
My name's Eric Teal. I live at 20774 Seminole. I'm the house that's directly behind the building.
Okay.
Just so I understand, are you wanting to take down that brick wall and extend into the property right there?
No, no, that is...
Okay, because it just, the way the drawing shows. It shows the blue.
If you could just stay on the record, please?
It shows this newer part, or the wall is there. Okay, okay. So my, so my only concern was if that wall was coming towards my house.
Okay.
And the reason being is because I didn't know that I didn't own that part of the property. So I moved in 2012 as a renter. And when I moved in, I rented from her uncle, my wife's uncle. He told me that I had to mow all of that yard, right? So when I bought it from him, I thought we had all that. It wasn't until I received this paper that I found out that I didn't own that piece of property. I thought this was to pursue the wall into the property line where you're showing. But my only other concern is traffic going down Seminole. I have a grandchild. He plays up and down that street. We're not in a fenced yard. So that's basically just my biggest concern, is just the extra traffic. Because we already get a lot of traffic from people just not even want to wait at the Inkster light and the, or the Inkster and Eight Mile light. They want to cut down Seminole to go around to Inkster. And that happens all day, every day. So I just feel like this is just going to bring more traffic to that.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this case? This is your last opportunity. Okay, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Jenkins?
Through the board, Mr. Architect, the drive-through adequate to, to go from a bank to a restaurant?
I'm sorry?
The drive-through is adequate to go from a bank to a restaurant.
That's a different property. That's not this case. What is this currently?
Oh, currently, it's a nail salon. They do pedicure, manicures, but they will be relocated within the, within the center. So that's why we're adding the drive-through window. No, it's, and it does accommodate what we're proposing. That was all through the pre-planning and planning process. And to answer the other gentleman's question, no, we're not moving the fence. We are trying to control traffic going out onto Seminole. That's where we have the no right turn and it's one-way going along the backside. That was just to give an out in case you got in line to order a coffee and you want, want to get out of line, you have an out. That's pretty standard these days for drive-throughs.
So the drive-through is adequate, okay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Frieden?
Just with regard to the concern that the, the neighbor had, is, I was a little confused when I was reading the, the plans and looking at the thing. There's, you're not changing either the ingress or, or ingress or egress, you're not adding anything to those, are there?
No.
Right now, there's, there's...
The only thing we are adding is the no right turn onto Seminole. It forces you go back down to Eight Mile.
Right now, it's, it's still going to be egress only?
Yeah, it's still egress only. That's the only way.
And so you're adding a sign, you're actually, so you're not, you're not making that an ingress point?
We're adding a sign and also making a curb cut, so it's not, you'll, you'll have to really force yourself to go around. So it's...
Okay, that was my only concern. I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay, Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I trust the traffic engineer that went out there for ingress and egress, so I would approve this.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbet?
I have no problem with it.
Okay, I agree. Mr. Frieden, will you make a motion for us?
I do have a question.
Oh, sure, yes.
Is it Big B Coffee or is it Biggie Coffee?
I think it's Big B.
Okay.
Henry, ZDA case 24-12, the appellant, Najagasso of Grand Eight LLC, owner, is requesting the following variances of the board. A building setback variance of 37 feet from the Seminole Street Road right-of-way, find 60 feet required, 23 feet existing, for a proposed restaurant with drive-through. Ingress egress points setback variance of 44 feet from the intersection of two streets, 60 feet required, 16 feet existing, for a proposed restaurant with a drive-through and to permit ingress and egress points from a thoroughfare that is not a major thoroughfare for the proposed restaurant with a drive-through. Landscape width, a landscape width variance of 2.25 feet along Seminole Street, 15 feet required, 12.75, 12.75 feet proposed. Property is located northeast corner of Eight Mile Road and Seminole Street, Sidwell Parcel 2431356025, located at 27200 through 27210, West Eight 2431356025, located at 27200 through 27210 West Eight Mile Road, Eight Mile Road and Zone B3 General Business. I move that we approve these waivers because the variances requested have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties, especially since the building and drives have existed at the same location since 1973. There may be additional traffic, but the location of the drive-through lane in relationship with the site and existing ingress egress points was thoroughly vetted by the city traffic engineer and other city staff.
Good. Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Your request is granted. Continue to work through the city and your project. Thank you. Will the city call the next case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Case 24-13, the appellant Sam Bacall of MAB Real Estate Incorporated owners requesting the following from the board: A variance of 17.6 feet of front yard building setback along Greenfield Road, 40 feet required, 22.4 feet proposed; a variance of 25.2 feet of south side yard setback, building setback; 29.4 feet required, 4.2 proposed; a variance of 44.3 feet of west rear yard building setback, 58.8 required, 14.5 feet proposed. The property is located at the southwest corner of Greenfield and 13 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel 2412230027, located at 30835 and 30825 Greenfield Road, Zone B3 General Business. This appeal is to Sections 5.169, Subsections 2C3, Article 18, and Sections 5.194, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Are the appellants here? Hi there, good evening.
Good evening.
Sam Bacall, the address is 30835 Greenfield, Southfield. Could you change the render, please? That's okay.
And if you could sign in, please?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so if you could describe to the board what you're asking for and why, please?
We have a gas station on the corner of 13 Mile and Greenfield.
And come right into the microphone, please.
Excuse me. We've owned a gas station on 13 Mile and Greenfield on the north end of this hall proposed. We've been there for 29 years, and there was a vacant building, commercial zone. It's been sitting vacant for the past few years. We purchased it last year, and we're asking to move our C-store into that building. By doing so, we would like to do an addition without, without coming any closer to the street, or to the neighbors, or to the business behind us. I know we're asking, it sounds like we're asking for three variances, but the building exists. Within the same line, we're just doing an addition to make it a, to rectangular, to make it practical for us. And the existing building lot we have is going to turn to the pumping station, plus EV chargers, and more landscaping.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
For ZBA case 24-13, the appellant Sam Bacall of MAB Real Estate Incorporated owner is requesting the following from the board: Variance of 17.6 feet of front yard building setback along Greenfield Road, 40 feet required, 22.4 feet proposed; a variance of 25.2 feet of south side yard building setback, 29.4 feet required, 4.2 feet proposed; and a variance of 44.3 feet of west rear yard building setback, 58.8 feet required, 14.5 feet proposed. The property is located at the southwest corner of Greenfield and 13 Mile Roads, Sidwell Parcel 2412230027, located at 30835 and 30825 Greenfield Road, Zone B3 General Business. Subject properties are currently developed with a BP gasoline station and former office building. The property to the north across 13 Mile Road within the Village of Beverly Hills is Zone B Business, and is developed with a Valvoline Instant Oil Change. The property to the south is Zone B3 General Business, and is developed with a Southfield muffler and brakes. The property to the east across Greenfield Road within the City of Royal Oak is Zone Neighborhood Business, and is developed with a 7-Eleven Convenience Store. Properties to the west are Zone B3 General Business and are one single-family residential, and are developed with the original $4 car wash in a single-family home fronting Brentwood Street, respectively. The proposed site contains .65 acres of land with 240.8 feet of frontage on Greenfield Road, and a depth of 142 feet along 13 Mile Road. The recently approved site plan for the property reflects the demolition of the existing BP gas station building and canopy, and the construction of a canopy and two building additions to the former office building totaling 2,028.75 square feet with a partial second-floor addition, and the conversion of the building to a new BP gas station with mini-mart and offices. The approved elevations reflect a mix of brick, EFS, metal coping, painted CMU, and limestone trim. All of the proposed building additions are in line with the existing building and will not extend any further towards property lines than what currently exists. Gas station structures have more restrictive setback requirements than standard B3 general business uses, and variances are needed due to the change in use from office to gas station for the proposed additions and for the proposed canopy. Proposed canopy is proposed to be set back approximately 37 feet from the front Greenfield Road property line, therefore, the three-feet variance needed will be minimal. Demolition of the existing gas station, recent land combination of properties, consolidation of curb cuts for driveways to three, and reconfiguration of the northerly portion of the site will help with customer traffic flow, as well as the maneuverability of fuel delivery trucks on and around, onto and around the site. The rear west side of the existing building and proposed addition will be windowless. The existing building and proposed addition are separated from the residential property to the west by an existing six-foot-tall masonry wall that will be increased to eight feet in height, as well as a buffer of mature trees and landscaping on the residential property. The appellant is making significant landscape improvements to the site, which will help to buffer the proposed building additions and canopy from Greenfield Road. The approved landscape plan indicates the addition of one deciduous tree, 25 deciduous shrubs, 21 evergreen shrubs, 23 perennials, and 33 ornamental grasses. Pedestrian amenities such as a patio with sculpture are proposed, and the existing bench and key walk to the bus stop on Greenfield Road will be maintained and relocated.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
I do.
Okay, are there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
Not at this time, but if you guys have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Will the city read the recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to approve the variances requested based upon the following: The west rear yard setback variance requested will have minimal adverse effects on the residential property to the southwest, especially since the rear elevation of the proposed addition is windowless. The existing masonry wall will be increased in height by two feet, and existing mature landscaping separates the residence from the proposed addition currently. Further, the building will not be any closer to the west property line than currently exists, so impact on open space will also be minimal. The east front yard setback variance for the new canopy and building additions will also have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties. Building additions will be in line with the existing building, and the canopy setback deficiency is minimal. The appellant is improving the site by consolidating driveway curb cuts, reconfiguring the site to optimize traffic flow and maneuverability, as well as upgrading and adding landscaping, pedestrian amenities, and public art to the site. And the proposed building addition and variances requested are still in keeping with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance.
All right, thank you. Anything further before we open public comment? Okay, so we will open public comment on this case. If you wish to speak to this case, now would be your opportunity. Yep, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and sign in with the sign-in sheet as well, please.
Hello, my name is Rob Fender. I'm at 30830 Brentwood Street in Southfield. I am the homeowner of the residential property to the south and west of the proposed building. I'm not in, I guess I'm not entirely understanding exactly what is being appealed here as far as like what the, the distances are being proposed, but based on the information that I have seen in the recommendation, based on improvements and such, I would like to get an idea as to, from the looks of it, it looks like the west end is then going to be all open space with then, it looks like a bit of an awning coming over. I realize that is all windowless area, but the wall that is currently there separating our properties does have, because of two utility poles that are there, there are separations in the wall that would then allow public access into our yard with what I can see would be the proposed removal of the small secular walls at either end of that area. And so that is my biggest concern at this moment, as far as that goes, but also trying to, I guess, understand what is being appealed here at the moment.
Sure. Sarah, do you have any?
If I might, through the chair, I'd like to ask the appellant about the openings in the wall.
We're not, we're not going to open that hole, but 14 feet, whatever it is between, I'll call it the alley between the building and the wall.
Yeah, we need you to accept to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. That wall is approximately 14 feet, which is like, almost like an alley between the building and the wall of their backyard. We're not going to remove that, so there will be no public access from the parking lot into that little gap.
But I think he's saying there's a gap in it right now. Are we closing the gap?
We're going to make a new wall, a new, we're going to add a facade to that wall. It's a cinder block. We're going to add brick to it. We're going to make it look nicer. So there will be no gap. I don't think anybody could walk through that opening right now. It's, I know there's a utility leaning. We're going to have to call the DTE to see if they can correct it, but we're not going to open it in any way.
Okay. I mean, a masonry wall is required between commercial property and residential property, correct?
It does exist, it's six foot high.
Right.
And we're going to put brick to make it all uniform.
If I might, through the chair, yes, an unpierced masonry wall is what's required by the ordinance. I, I'm not aware of any openings, but...
I wish you had more pictures, because we do have photographs.
If there are openings, there, you know, it'll be required to, to close any openings with these new walls, or another variance will need to be sought.
I guess, I guess that would be part of the concern. One of the things mentioned was that the existing wall would be built upwards, would be increased in height, and I suppose the concern there would be also like if you are going to be increasing the height, will you then be rebuilding the wall to get rid of those open areas that are already there, that are currently blocked off by a piece of like wood panel?
We will make it all uniform. We will make the whole wall uniform. It's not going to be patched up. It's going to be cinder block and brick in the front.
Okay, so are you rebuilding the present wall?
No, we're not.
No, okay.
Existing wall is six feet, we're going to add two more feet to it.
You're adding to it, okay.
To make it eight feet, but we're going to add brick to it to make it look like the same as the building.
If I might, to the chair, to the board, if that's a condition that you may want to include on any possible motion, that's certainly...
I mean, that's code, though.
Correct, but just for a double assurance.
Okay.
You know, I don't know if there is some sort of legal non-conforming situation there. I can't imagine that there would be. I don't believe that it predates the wall requirement, the property predates the wall requirement, and I don't believe there's any variance that would allow that. We looked through variances, and that was not something that was found.
Right.
So if that's something that the board wishes to do, that's certainly...
Just reiterate that a, what did you call it, non-pierced?
Yeah, yes, that the new wall is an un-pierced masonry wall as required under the ordinance, and if there's some technical reason why it can't be done or something, then they would have to come back.
Okay.
And ask for an additional variance.
Okay, and I think he's clarifying where exactly he's speaking to, and sometimes that's exactly what we can do at these meetings, is bring people together so that they can understand exactly. Yes, does somebody say something? Or just laughing?
I say making friends with many people.
That's right, that's right. We do a lot of work here at the ZBA.
I'm just assuming this is where the people, there'd be more people walking through there.
While they're talking, I just, we did a sign case on this property.
On that, on that law firm.
On the law firm, yeah. So is that not, that's not noted here? I would assume that sign case carries forward into, even though there's a combination...
He said it was vacant for a long time.
Right, that's what I was thinking, it wasn't that long ago that we did the sign...
That was about three years ago when the law firm came in. Before that was a real estate office, way before that used to be an appliance warehouse.
But like, we approved signage on the north side of that law firm that you should be granted as part of...
Yeah, if I might, through the chair, to Wayne, sorry, Wayne, but with the sign ver, or with, when a sign permit comes in, you would look to any other prior variances and do, you know...
We would apply those, yeah. I don't see why we wouldn't.
I mean, again, I think, well, I think the challenge is that he has a new parcel number because he has a combination, so we need to make sure the old parcel number is probably included.
It carries over, all those records carry over.
We combined both properties together back.
Correct, yeah. So, but you still get the ord, the sign ord, variation that we've given.
We have not visited the signs, square footage.
No, you have something.
We just want to make sure that we are okay with this before we go on forward.
Sure, understood, okay.
Thanks. But to the neighbor's concern, there is a pole, and there is like a gap, maybe a half foot on each side. We'll make sure we'll combine it. We'll add cinder block or brick to make it look all uniform. Right now, there's a small portion, it's wood. He's right. He showed me a photograph from his backyard.
Okay.
And there's some wood to secure the property.
Okay, so we'll add that to our condition.
We'll make sure that's all uniform.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Madam Chair, if I may, to the appellant, you're planning to put signage on the north side? That's what was approved, I believe?
That's what we previously approved.
Correct, yeah.
So you're planning on putting more sign, new signage on the front, on the north side of that same building and demolishing the old gas station?
Correct, yeah. But I just don't know the sizes yet. We have to...
Okay.
We'll see what exists and what we could use.
So there'll be nothing between that sign and 13 Mile? There'll be no more gas station, so it will be facing a major thoroughfare?
There will be no more buildings.
So it'd be facing a major thoroughfare, so it'd be a legal sign. We wouldn't need a, a variance to put that sign up anymore.
Yeah, well, once you figure out your signs, yeah, okay. Okay, where are we? I don't even know where we're at. Okay, we did, is there anybody else from public comment? Sorry. Okay, we'll close public comment, turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
I think this is a really good way to redevelop that little corner there. That was the problem with the law firm. The law firm, they wanted the extra sign because you're passing southbound and northbound of Greenfield, you blink and you miss it. That was the whole reason for it. Now, if that's going to be incorporated into become the grocery part of the gas station, it looks a lot better on the plan. It looks like it's more inviting, that whole corner, with the inclusion of that building. So I do, I would approve of these variances.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbit?
Looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Yeah, I approve of this. The gas station looks better that, this way, and that law firm building looked terrible. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Jenkins?
I, I recommend it as well, but I think, I thought we were going to make some type of amendment to make sure that, that gap is...
Yeah, we will, we're not to the motion yet, so...
Okay, okay, so make sure that's part of the process.
Yeah, okay. I agree, I think this is a good use and a good combination, and yeah, I mean, there definitely were many struggles from the law firm, so, Mr. Jenkins, do you want to make a motion for us?
So, I would approve.
So, so move. Okay, so we got to get some details in first. So let's see, we are on ZBA case 2413, which is requesting a variance of 17.6 feet of front yard building setback along Greenfield, 40 required, 22.4 proposed; a variance of 25.2 feet of south yard building setback, 29.4 required, 4.2 proposed; and a variance of 44.3 feet of west yard building setback, 58.8 required, and 14.5 proposed. Property is Sidwell Parcel 2412230027, located at 30835 and 30825 Greenfield Road, Zoned B3 General Business. And I think we wanted to add the condition of an un-pierced masonry wall.
That's correct.
Okay, can I have a, you have something else?
I think, are we making that a condition of the entire thing over there?
I mean, I think it's a condition of any commercial to residential, yeah, yeah. Okay, so I, we have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, your request is granted. Yeah. Yeah, thank you, have a good night. Will the city call the next case, the last case?
Yes, ma'am. Case two-four-dash-one-four, the appellant, Ziad Arabo, designer representing Pata Development Owner, is requesting the following variance from the board. A variance of twenty point five-six feet in front yards building setback from Twelve Mile Road, sixty feet required, thirty-nine point four-four feet existing, a variance of one-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-seven square feet of front yard landscaping, four-thousand-two-hundred square feet required, two-thousand, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirteen is provided. The property is located on the north side of Twelve Mile Road between Northwestern Highway and Franklin Road, Sidwell Parcel, two-four-zero-seven, four-seven-seven, zero-zero-eight, located at two-six-three-three-six West Twelve Mile Road, Zoned B-3 General Business. This appeal is to Sections five-point-one-six-nine and five-point-one-seven-oh, Article eighteen, Chapter forty-five, Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
All right, thank you. Is the appellant here? Thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Ziad Arabo from Ziad Design Build, three-one-three-one-three Northwestern Highway, Farmington Hills, representing the Pataha Group who owns this building. Not sure how many years this building was vacant for, but it's the old Fifth Third Building, if you're familiar with it, Fifth Third Bank. We are proposing to rent the space out, my clients are representing, renting the space out to Savvy Sliders. It's an existing non-conforming building, as you see that sort of dark dash line that represents the sixty feet. We're not adding to the footprint of the building. As far as the lack of, the landscape, the variance we're asking for the landscape, there's no way to go above and beyond the landscaping that's already there, except for when we got approved through planning, through the four meetings, we've added a lot of trees and shrubs and flowers and all kinds of different plantations. The reason why the planning's not enough is because there's an existing sort of fire lane and drive-through that goes around. The only thing we are adding to the setback, even though the footprint is non-conforming, is that we're adding awnings to the front. Two thirty-six-inch awnings suspended up in the air with no foundation, one thirty-inch extruded awning in the front that encroaches into the setback a little bit more than what's existing at the footprint. We're not married to these awnings, if you guys don't like them, but it just gives the, gives the site a lot of curb appeal. Right now, this building is a gable building, old style. We removed the two columns with the gable-covered awning, I mean, the covered porch that protected the drivers for the drive-through, Doric columns, red colonial brick. We are completely refacing it with new windows of a new modern style. So again, existing non-conforming, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
For findings of fact, for ZBA case twenty-four fourteen, the appellant, Ziad Arabo, designer representing Pataha Development Owner, is requesting the following variances from the board. Variance of twenty-three point five-six feet of front yard building setback from Twelve Mile Road, sixty feet required, thirty-nine point four-four existing, and thirty-six point four-four feet proposed. Please note, this is a change from the legal notice. Variance of one-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-seven square feet of front yard landscaping, four-thousand-two-hundred square feet required, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirteen square feet provided. The property is located on the north side of Twelve Mile Road between Northwestern Highway and Franklin Road, Sidwell Parcel, two-four-zero-seven, four-seven-seven, zero-zero-eight, located at two-six-three-three-six West Twelve Mile Road, Zoned B-3 General Business. Subject property is currently developed with the former Huntington Bank Building, recently approved for a restaurant with drive-through use. Property to the north and west is Zone B-T, B-two Planned Business and is developed with a Franklin Point Medical Center Building. Property to the south across Twelve Mile Road is Zone B-3 General Business and is developed with a FedEx location, recently approved for the construction of a gas station. The property to the east is Zone B-3 General Business and is developed with a Franklin Medical Center. Site contains point-four-nine acres of land with one-hundred-and-forty feet of frontage on Twelve Mile Road and a depth of one-hundred-and-fifty-three feet. The approved site plan indicates the conversion of the former two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-three square-foot bank building to a restaurant with drive-through. The elevations consist of a mix of decorative stone, limestone, metal awnings and roof coping and cement board siding. Parking required is twenty-eight spaces, with twenty-two spaces provided on-site and additional spaces provided via reciprocal parking with adjacent properties. Article eighteen, B-3 General Business, Section five-point-one-six-nine of the zoning ordinance was amended on October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one to require that drive-through, drive-in and fast food restaurants, any restaurant with a drive-through or bar lounge, and any restaurant open twenty-four hours must have a building setback of at least sixty feet from any street right-of-way line. Proposed restaurant will utilize the former bank building drive-through banking configuration for their drive, restaurant drive-through. The only portions of the building closer to the south property line than what currently exists are two decorative canopies proposed for the front elevation, which extend three feet south from the edge of the building. The existing medical office building to the east, which is over one-hundred-and-eighty-four feet from the eastern property line, has a front yard setback of approximately thirty feet, which is closer to Twelve Mile Road than the subject building. A portion of front yard landscaping, approximately three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-point-three-feet, square feet, is proposed for removal to increase maneuverability when exiting the drive-through lane. If this were to remain a bank or office use, the landscaping required would be one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet with two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirteen square feet proposed and would meet front yard landscape requirements even after the reduction. The appellant has worked closely with the city to come up with an approved landscape plan. The approved landscape plan indicates the addition of five new deciduous ornamental trees, fifty-one deciduous shrubs, fifty-three evergreen shrubs, and sixty-five perennials.
Great, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
I do.
Okay, any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
None at this time.
Okay, can we get the city recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to approve the variances based upon the following. Variance requests will have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties, especially since the subject building with drive-through configuration has existed since the building was constructed in nineteen eighty-three, though used as a bank, now proposed as a restaurant. Further, the building on the adjacent property to the east is closer to the front property line than the subject building. The only change proposed to the building that affects the existing front yard setback is the addition of two decorative canopies, which, again, are decorative and will not alter open space feel. The existing thirty-nine point four-four-foot building setback and proposed landscape improvements along the frontage will sufficiently screen and buffer the restaurant and associated restaurant activity from Twelve Mile, thereby meeting the intent of the zoning ordinance. Increasing the landscaping along Twelve Mile Road would eliminate required parking spaces for the entire site and/or eliminate or decrease widths of proposed drives, thus creating a need for additional variances and resulting in decreased mobility on-site. The proposed variances requested are in keeping with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance.
All right, great, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing at this time.
Seeing no one in the audience, we are gonna open and close public comment and turn it over to the board. Ms. Libbit?
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I agree as well.
All right, Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
Recommended highly. I recommend it highly, okay?
I know, I'm...
One question I had earlier was, I got mixed up a little with something, okay? The, the drive-through is adequate from, going from a bank to a restaurant?
Yes, sir, that's exactly what it was. It was the old Fifth Third Bank. Not sure how long it's been closed for, but my clients bought it about a year ago, and now we're turning it into Savvy Sliders. Sit-down, a little bit of sit-down, but mostly carryout, you know, these days with that type of business.
So the answer is yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. I also agree, I don't have any concerns. Mr. Rogers, will you make a motion for us, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
In regards to ZBA case twenty-four dash fourteen, the appellant, Ziad Arabo, designer representing the Pataha Development Owner, is requesting the following variances from the board. One, a variance of twenty point, oh, we have a, I'm sorry. One, a variance of twenty-three point five-six feet of front yard building setback from Twelve Mile Road, sixty feet required, thirty-nine point four-four feet existing, thirty-six point four-four feet proposed. Please note that this is a change from the legal notice. And number two, a variance of one-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-seven square feet of front yard landscaping, forty-two-hundred square feet required, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirteen square feet provided. Property is located on the north side of Twelve Mile Road between Northwestern Highway and Franklin Road, Sidwell Parcel, twenty-four-zero-seven-dash-four-seven-seven-dash-zero-zero-eight, located at two-six-three-three-six West Twelve Mile Road, Zoned B-3 General Business. I make a motion to approve the requested variances based upon the following. Number one, the waiver request will have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties, especially since the subject building with drive-through configuration has existed since the building was constructed in nineteen eighty-three, though used as a bank, now proposed as a restaurant. Further, the building on the adjacent property to the east is closer to the front property line than the subject building. The only change proposed to the building that affects the existing front yard setback is the addition of two decorative canopies, which are decorative and will not alter open space feel. The existing thirty-nine point four-four feet foot building setback and proposed landscape improvements along the frontage will sufficiently screen and buffer the restaurant and associated restaurant activity from Twelve Mile Road, thereby meeting the intent of the zoning ordinance. Increasing the landscaping along Twelve Mile Road would eliminate required parking spaces for the entire site and/or eliminate or decrease widths of proposed drives, thus creating the need for additional variances and resulting in decreased mobility on-site. And the proposed variances requested are in keeping with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Your request is granted.
Thank you, and good night.
Thank you. Okay, so that closes our public hearing. We do have a few sets of minutes, so let's start with the May twenty-first minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections?
Approve, approval as minutes from five-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four, as stated here.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved for five-twenty-one. How about four, I'm sorry, six-four? Any changes, any concerns? All right, can I have a motion for the minutes, to approve the minutes as presented from June, hold on, June fifth, I apologize.
No moves.
Well, the, the minutes, when you look at the first page, actually say the fifth. So...
I believe the meeting was the fourth.
Okay, then this needs to be corrected.
Mine says June...
Mine says the fourth up here, but on the first page, it says June fifth.
Well, the eighth was Saturday, so the fourth was Tuesday.
Okay, so we, these need to be updated. Okay, thank you. But with that update, can we approve them? Yes, okay.
No moves.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so minutes are approved. Looks like we, our next meeting is scheduled for August twentieth at this time. We only have one case, which means if we don't get another case...
Correct. I am working with an applicant right now, all I'm waiting for is payment for the case, so chances are we will have a second one.
Okay.
And they're both signed variances.
Okay, thank you. So April twentieth will be our next meeting. Any miscellaneous?
August twentieth.
Sorry, thank you, August twentieth.
You're like April, don't you?